Good morning and welcome to the Boston City Water District's February 12th, 2015 Work Session Call Meeting in order and welcome all of our guests and elected officials. Let's see, we got Mayor Doris Debbie. Do we have any other elected officials?
We have Miss Filiyah and Pep Rollins.
Pep Rollins and Drissa Filiyah. I didn't see y'all, it was a fellow sitting right in front of you. We're hiding. (laughter) City Council from Hyrum, thank you all for being here. Marshall, you bring forth the position. We have one citizen, Captain Hammonds, says her address is on file and our business item number one. For our invocation and pledge, we have Pastor Rodney Carson with Pleasant Road Baptist Church. If you'll come forward, will y'all stand with me if you're able, and we'll have our invocation and pledge.
Well, I pray, you know, one reason I took this thing this morning, because y'all know that March 13th, we're invited to our Wild Grand Dinner with Pleasant Road, and you'll get something within the next couple of weeks. We asked the rest of you if you're coming, so we were supposed to get a seat. We have to turn away people every year, and we want to make sure you've got a place to be there. You'll get that in the next week or two.
You don't leave there? Oh, good. I bet Matt knows that.
We serve about 700 men in about 30 minutes. Good break, y'all. So let's pray. Father God, we come today and we thank you for this glorious day that you have made. And Father, as we gather together for this meeting this morning, I pray your wisdom for our commissioners and the people of this county, we thank you for their service. We thank you for the service of all the people of this county, especially our public safety workers, Father, just you would be with them each and every day over the tasks that they have to do. And Father, now again, we just ask your direction today, not only today, but for the days to come, the weeks to come, even with this county, that it may prosper and do the things that you have to do for your state and your nation. And Father, let your presence be felt in this world today. Father, we need to, the world needs to know that you're a loving, caring, compassionate God of mercy, a God of grace. And Father, we praise you for that. Again, lead this day to day. Father, we praise you for all that you do. Christ name, amen.
Amen. I pray. 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 I'd like to, if I could say something, Mike, about your announcement on what happened the other night. I had the opportunity to go out on Hyrum City Road and kind of spend about an hour with the water guys late that night. Very cold, they ended up having another crew that came in and kind of helped out to get finished up. We had a new fella that was only on the job a couple of days that was out there and had a chance to talk to him. Of course, he was real shook up and, but just to see the way that crew came together and worked and worked together to get the job done after what had happened, they were all visibly shook up. We had some time to share some time together and it was just good. So hats off to that crew, the dude guy that was there for two days. And I hope and pray is for everybody to get healed up and be able to give back. But those guys just really went way above the call of duty and I can't, couldn't ask for anything else. And they were really very cautious of looking out for each other and also the Sheriff's Department out there just to help protect the rest of that unit. So, thank you.
We have also on the working for the commission, some other family members that are in-laws with Mr. Pay. So we'll certainly keep them in our prayers. And unfortunately, he's in a former accident with a lot in his leg. And so the other leg that has the lot in it is going to be extremely difficult to repair. So if y'all will keep that family in your prayers. Mark Haney will be here very shortly. I'd like to announce that we will not be meeting on June 9th, 2015. I'll be attending American Water Works Association Annual Conference. I'm the Vice Chair of the Cog Marianna Water Authorities Union, a lot of notice that we will be canceled that meeting. I have a letter that I'd like to read. Can we ask Jody Martin to step in? Jody, can you come up in the front? She got all dressed up for us today. She's always behind the scenes, doing work and producing her show. But I got this letter and I thought it's a nice thing to share with people. My name is Renata Marquez Bryant. I'm a local Cub Scout Den Leader for PAC 9161. I was recently put in touch with Ms. Jody Martin, who I was told could help me with my Tigers in the Communications Section of our program. This section is very important in scouting and we need to visit a TV station or something of the like in order to compete for required achievement on the journey to their Tiger Cub Badge. Over several weeks, Jody and I made plans. My den, which consists of four Tiger Cubs, first graders and three others in the den consisting of first and fourth graders, had the opportunity to visit during the Board of Commissioners. Y'all already may remember that, they came in here and we introduced them, about 18 to 20 of them. I write today to commend Jody for her efforts throughout the entire process, professional kind patient, and most importantly, entertaining while being important. The boys have an absolute class. They learned so much from the personalized guided tour that they got through the studio, the meeting in Jody's office. They enjoyed the opportunity to listen to an Eagle Scout and see how hard work pays off. The scouts were particularly long-winded at the process of recording and editing and that technology and its incredible seemingly endless uses to communicate. All that learning while having fun with a green screen as well. This opportunity provided more insight and information than we could have hoped for. Jody was fantastic throughout the entire process. I strongly feel she will be recognized for her efforts, even if it's just in this email. She showed very positive reflection on the board, her profession, and the county itself. Thank you all for opening up your meeting to our scouts and thank Jody for your time, cooperation, and fantastic efforts. The pictures you took and sent are very appreciated. The parents were truly pleased and it'll help build our slideshow for the end of the year review. Thank you again for amazing opportunities. Thank you.
(applause) Back to work, man.
That's nice when somebody takes the time to convene and thank people for doing an outstanding job. So, well received. Mike, we've had some exciting things to happen as it relates to our reservoir. You want to give a brief update, just a little bit of what's happened in the last couple of days?
It's been exciting, the last 48 hours. I was in Atlanta all day yesterday. I was meeting with GFO, the structure, the bonds that will be used to fund about 50% of the reservoir cost. They've allowed us to structure them such that we won't have repayment obligations until we're actually producing water and selling the product, which is going to be a tremendous, tremendous asset. We finished the negotiations and Tabitha was with me during that part and she asked if we could borrow some more money for some other things, get similar terms. And I don't think they want to see us down there anymore. We've got the best term we're going to get. So we appreciate their continued help. They'll be back out in Polton in about, about eight days to finalize the third of those loans and then further discussion on state direct investment. At the tail end of that meeting, a gentleman by the name of Russ Pennington, Russ was assigned to GFO by the Governor's Office specifically for water resources projects. And Russ provided us with an update on the meeting that was held in the Governor's Office on Tuesday evening. The Governor met with Colonel Chitka, who is the head of the Mobile Corps, and Colonel Tickner, who is the head of the Savannah Corps, and General Turner, who is the commander of the entire division that contains both Mobile and Savannah, among others. His recollection of the meeting, and Russ was present during the meeting, he said to Governor cut to the chase with these gentlemen and said, "Gentlemen, I'm here to talk about the reservoirs that are going to be constructed in my state. Specifically, I want to talk to you about Richland Creek Reservoir. I think that ought to be the next project with permitted through the Savannah District." Colonel Tickner concurred. Colonel Chitka, who is doing the Team of Impacts Analysis Review in Mobile, committed to having those results sent to Savannah before the month's out. And Colonel Tickner committed to a draft 404 permit inside of four weeks. So we are looking at our draft permit hitting Polton County by April 1st of this year.
Wow. (applause) To go hand in hand with that, talk a little bit, there's a 401 permit that's not yet drafted.
You're right on. The 401 certification is drafted by the state environmental agency, in this case it's the Environmental Protection Division. The 401 certification signifies to the federal agencies that the applicant, in this case Polton County, has done all of the necessary studies and there are hundreds of them. Mitigation plans, cultural resource reviews, fish and wildlife reviews, joint public notices, all these things are done. That notice was emailed to the Corps yesterday and along with the language that they'll use to draft that 404. So the 401 certifies we're complete. That language is used to draft the federal 404 permit. And the last thing that will be issued is a water withdrawal permit, but that'll come later, once we're under construction. We had a follow-up after that was over. We attended a, about a four-hour design review meeting, myself and Lori attended with our consultants, also in Atlanta, to go through each of the major components. So we understood where the cost was, what the design is going to look like, and what the schedule is going to be in light of this new news about our 404. So we can start construction. What you'll see coming to you soon is the request for notice proceeds on the contracts that have already been issued. The last one to be done is the one for the actual dam. The dam design will go before the Safe Dams Committee in the next 30 days. They have 90 days to review. Once that review is complete, we incorporate those comments, then that design hits the streets. So that'll be the next one that comes to y'all sometime this summer. But that's the last big component that we have left and construction will start.
Wow. Man, I think, you know what we're doing. We have Lori Ashmore at the table, it's like, you guys know what you're doing. Our Lori, she brings a wealth of knowledge to that group.
She certainly does.
Sheriff Gary Gillich has written a letter to the citizens of the county. And the letter is, I think we have copies in the back, and I believe it is on our webpage. And Gary has been talking to me over the last several months. And we have, he wants to appeal to our citizens, we have a horrible heroin problem. And young people are running wild flights. And we're trying to get preventive programs in place. We're working, we will start to help find a place to have those meetings and there is, unlike some of the drugs, there is recovery from this, but you have to approach it in the best ways. And you have to approach it from a whole family atmosphere. And I've sat with the sheriff and I've sat with some folks that are going to set this up and they've been through programs that they know works. So we're working very hard about this, but he's just seeing way, way, way too many overdoses with the needle still in arms of young people. And it's showing in all, but it has reached a crisis point where he felt like he needed to come to the people in it for him. So if we put together a committee, a little sort of that, or select some folks, I hope you'll step up and help volunteer for whatever we need to do in this problem. It meant enough to him to write a letter to Polton County. So I copied that letter. He couldn't be here today, but he asked me to mention that. Also, I was informed on February 3rd, 2015, that the Silver Common Field at Paulan Northwest Airport, Papella Air Force, provided a $403,710 payment to the Polton County Airport Authority for the first payment towards the Polton County Airport revenue. So just wanted to make that announcement. I'd like to say Mark Haney will be with us here very, very shortly. There are no bid awards. Reports from the meetings in departments, we have, I talked to Vernon and Dave yesterday. I've got on here a discussion of House Bill 170. House Bill 170, as y'all may understand, is part of trying to raise a billion dollars for transportation, for infrastructure, for bridges and roads and all types of things. And the gasoline tax has not met the demand. And I don't know if you had time, if y'all had time to read any of this material, but I sat in on a webinar yesterday and it's House Bill 170, if you want to follow it. I understand it's working with corrections and it's working with folks to see if they can drop the bill and get it through the House and then pass it from the House over to the Senate. What we first heard about this bill is it would take monies from the counties, the cities, and the schools. So it's got our school board pretty much up in arms, it's got the cities up in arms. And so we want to make sure that we understand it and we have discussion about it and we know where this thing is going. From the slides that were presented, it seems as if there's only a drought that will, excuse me, only a resolution that will be needed on a local level. And all they're saying is this will just replace what is being taken by the state. So right now, it's a little bit hard to digest. There's conversations all over the state. I chair the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, which is 15 counties and 49 cities. There's not a county commissioner in that group that says, "I'd like to see this bill pass." So they're calling to see how it gets amended, what they have to do. As y'all well know, because of more fuel-efficient cars and because of electric cars, there's been a problem in collection of taxes. Excuse me. And we're not collecting enough money to come close to paying for the damage that's done every year to our roads, unless we fill any new roads. So at this point, for this board, I'll open up discussion. If y'all have any comments you want to make about House Bill 170, I think we will try to make this an ongoing discussion and try to understand it as it goes through with different amendments. If anybody has any comments they would make on House Bill 170.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did have a chance yesterday to talk to one of our representatives and I didn't get to read all the material. I figured the slide would pull up. But it may be a little premature to talk about it. I think we need to start the conversation. I don't know if we need to do anything at this point. We need to see the final bill. But he was not committed. He wasn't saying he was for it or against it. He wanted to see some changes. He told me several things that I won't really disclose at this time, but he has some good ideas and he probably will do what he's talking about. I think it's going to end up helping us and I think we'll see a little bit of change in this bill.
One note they have is the state excise tax will go from $5.29 per gallon by eliminating the sales tax on motor fuel, including local, and converting to this excise tax, which there's a fourth penny that's been charged and is supposed to be dedicated for transportation only. It has always gone into the general fund. So we will see that get dedicated. The tax will be collected at the distributor level and be based off a four-year price of $3.38. They're also are looking at charges for a consumer vehicle if it's electric and a commercial vehicle. And so we'll see. They put a, if we change over to an excise tax, they put a chart in here that will, they say will help Polton County collect another $500,000. It will be an excise tax. So again, I just want to make y'all aware that the bill is coming through, we're trying to study it, see what kind of impact. The question was asked yesterday and frequently asked questions, what is being done to try to make the schools whole? And they do not have a way to collect those revenues through an excise tax. And the answer to that is the General Assembly is working through those issues. And the cities would be going through an LMIG formula, which is two-thirds centerline mile and one-third population for distribution to the city. So again, this is the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia trying to keep us informed and do our lobbying down in the state to try to keep us prepared for whatever change may happen in this bill. So just letting you know, we're trying to stay on topic there. Any other questions?
I had a question. Vernon, maybe you got the answer. Yesterday, I couldn't reach anybody, but I haven't read all the material. Will the taxes that are gathered in Polton County, will they stay in Polton County? Or can they take Polton County taxes and spend them in South Georgia?
The way I understand, not. But again, right now, there's amendments and changes and the bill has not completely dropped, but it's probably gotten more frequent conversation than any other bill they brought up in the last probably 10 years. I think we're probably all, I talked to two of the representatives, I think we all need to make sure we keep that conversation going, especially this week, maybe throughout the weekend. And I think they've got a long way to go. It'll probably happen quick, but I think they've got a long way to go. According to what I've heard, I think there's going to be some other changes. I do think we need to realize this comes, of course, this comes out, a lot of the folks that are pushing this also supported the TSPLOSH a couple of years ago. And so here we are, the citizens voted that down, I believe 70-something percent across the state. So here we are dealing with it in this form. So I think we need to make sure that we're in touch with our representatives. That's what they're there for.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may add also, they have a group of engineers who did a study and they came up with a billion-dollar figure. And the question we need to ask is, who's going to receive the billion dollars? Of course, the engineers have got the projects that need to be taken care of. So, you know, is that billion dollars accurate? Do we need it all this year? Can we, you know, gather some of it and make it stagger throughout the next couple of years? So there's a lot that needs to be talked about, but we will stay on topic.
Any more discussion on House Bill 170? And again, we'll try to talk about this as much as we can, know as much as we can about it and how it affects us here locally and possibly, if y'all would like, when we get to the point, invite one of them in to come in and talk to us and explain, it'd be great, how it would be effective. No bid awards and public participation on agenda items, acting items. Mr. Adams, I haven't been saying this, but you have five minutes and please write your comments to the chair.
Okay. All right. Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here to discuss Agenda Item Number One, particularly in relation to the Polton County Airport Authority Board members. I feel the Polton County Airport Authority has done a great disservice to the citizens of Polton in relation to the intergovernmental agreement voted on in September, further putting taxpayers at risk. On September 9th, 2014, the Polton County Commission passed by a three-to-two margin integr governmental contract between the county and the airport authority that was later amended in an attempt to circumvent the 2014 elections. The Polton County voters elected the new commissioners who stated their clear opposition to commercialization. The IGA contract improperly seeks to bind the county and thwart the ability of this commission in future years and exercise control of the operations of the funding of the airport for a 10-year period. The IGA unnecessarily exposed the county as a sponsor under the FAA rules and regulations to liability for a breach of the FAA grant assurances due to the nature of the agreements secretly entered into with the 2012 Silver Common Agreement. The IGA also exposes the county to litigation over the use of restrictions on the airport from the 163 acres that we bought from the city of Atlanta. And the intergovernmental contract and its amendments are not in the best interest of the Polton County citizens. I want to thank Commissioner Powell back in September for voting against that. And I welcome the two new commissioners, Tony Crow, Inverden, and Colette. And Commissioner Colette said in his first meeting, "Sometimes we just have to do what's right, no matter what the cost." And I agree with his remark. The Polton County Airport Authority then voted to adopt this agreement with little or no discussion during their monthly meeting on September 24th, 2014. I urged this commission to move quickly to remove those PCAA members, replace them with members recommended and voted on by this board, and rescind the intergovernmental agreement between the county and the airport authority passed by last year's board of commissioners. Thank you.
Consent agenda, we have a follow-up. Discussion on three consent agenda items. Number one, appoint Elaine Stokes to fill the unexpired term of John Henderson on the Polton County Board of Trustees with a term ending 6/16. Appoint David Martinez to fill the unexpired term of Dave Moroney on the Polton County Recreation Commission with a term ending 12/31/18. And appoint Mark Littford to the Recreation Commission with a term ending 12/31/19. Would you like to move any of these items to regular session? Hearing none. Did Mr. Haney get here yet? Okay, we'll proceed on. We'll do our business, discuss action over removal of Kerry Finnmore, Calvin Thompson, Ellis Sastre from Polton County Airport Authority, removal of Matt Zale and Alex Hill from Polton County Industrial Building Authority. Polan County Industrial Building Authority, this is for January 27, 2015, Board of Commissioners meeting. Counselor, do you have any new information on this?
We received the ACCG opinion, and then I believe that Mr. Chairman received an opinion from another attorney, Roy Barnes, as well as distributed to the commissioners.
I did. And what these opinions are, are Supreme Court rulings on how board members can be appointed and how they can be removed. And both of Roy Barnes and ACCG said it would be a violation of all if we did that. Any discussion on own business?
Mr. Chairman, in light of the legal counsel that we received from Mrs. Kipper and in light of the information that augmented that from Governor Barnes' law office, I would think we should move in a direction of postponing indefinitely the removal of Mr. Thompson and Mr. Timmore and Mr. Aston and Zelli and Alan Ship from the two respective boards. I think we ought to move in that direction.
Well, I'm the one that made the motion, so I'm the only one that can withdraw it. Am I right? So at this time, I'm not willing to withdraw the motion. However, I might be willing at the two o'clock meeting to table it to table number one indefinitely. And I have read over what was sent. It is an opinion. Of course, my motion that I made was to remove them. It was not, I did not add anything to that motion. It was just to remove them, meaning I didn't give a reason. It could be at a time where there's a reason for cause or some other reason. And so at this time, I'm not willing to withdraw it, but I'll probably be willing this afternoon to table it indefinitely, number one. Number two, discuss action on--
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also, when that was first brought up, you know, I saw some reason to do it, and I'm still not so certain there's not reason to try to do it. I'm not happy with some decisions made. It has been brought to my attention, told by some of those people that yes, the IGA was done to prevent us new commissioners from being able to vote on it. I don't think if they're voting that way, they're really doing the best interest for the county. However, in saying all that, I have had to change apart, and that change apart is due mainly to Commissioner Post One, David Carmichael. When he said that we have made promises to these guys, the promises were made that they would serve out their term and that they planned their life and their actions and their jobs and everything around that to do that. Talking about what he said, I think it makes good sense. If you remember when I ran for office, my campaign, a large portion, a large staple part of my campaign was broken promises. I think people are tired of promises being broken by elected officials and those appointed by those elected officials. I think we need to stand up and say we're not going to break promises anymore. During that campaign, I said, hey, I'm going to honor the promises made beforehand that were told to the citizens of this county that there would not be a commercial element in the airport and the promise to the city of Atlanta. I still stand by those promises, and I think the right thing I want to do today would be stand on the promises made to those guys too, even though I may not totally agree with it and think there may be some justification to remove them. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir. I'd like to say, I think Mr. Colette brings up a good point. Like I said, I'm willing to table it indefinitely. We talk about, we talk about the promises, and Mr. Colette and I have talked about some of the things that Mr. Carmichael said about promises and commitments. And over this past week, I heard a sermon, and the sermon was about, basically, do you have a contract with your wife or do you have a covenant with your wife? And so I kind of took that in everyday life about contracts and covenants and promises and broken promises. Vernon and I have talked a couple of times this week on the phone about that, and we've referred back to kind of what you said. And really what I've learned this week, it's neat that no matter how old you get, you learn things. Really what I've learned this week is contracts are to protect you. Contracts about me, it's about I, it's to protect you. Might be two sides of a contract, but a contract's about protecting me or I, whoever's in that contract. Contract's always about that person. Covenant is about the other person. And so as I look back on things and promises made and promises broken, as we've talked about during our campaigns, and we talk about this here, I look back at what I consider as elected officials and leaders, whether it's elected officials on board, commissioners, city council, school board, leaders in different groups, ballparks and whatever around the community chamber of commerce, that when we speak to the citizens and we talk to the citizens, we're listening to what they want, what they're saying by their votes, by their questions, their phone calls, their emails. And when we commit to something, we're giving them a covenant because we're doing it for them. See, we're supposed to be in this job, it's not for me. I don't have a contract with the citizens, I've got a covenant, and I'm supposed to be looking out for the citizens. So I agree with Mr. Colette. We've discussed that and some things that Mr. Carmichael said. And so at this time, this afternoon, I'll be willing to table it indefinitely, but I want us to remember the covenant that was made to the citizens of Polan County. Thank you. I made a covenant too. And when I was running in '08, I stood on people's support. Squalid, they'd lost everything. We were in the worst recession. In '09, they grouped it out. And what I did and made promises, I'll do whatever I can to help bring opportunities to Polan, give you the opportunity so that you as businessmen and women can earn a living. And I kept that promise. I said one of the things I would do was build a Wellstar Hospital, and I couldn't be prouder of that. We'll have an update in just a moment, Mark. And then to take another asset we had, which was the airport, and make it be successful. And when you look at a $50 million asset, you're almost a fool if you don't look at every possibility as a businessman to capture that asset and then be able to get as much as you possibly can out of it for not only the citizens of the day, but the citizens of the future that want a job in aviation and aerospace. So believe me, I believe in covenants. I am with my girlfriend of 50 years and 43 years of marriage, so I believe in a covenant, and I stand by it. Number two, discuss action to appoint former John Dean to the Polan County Airport Authority with a term meaning 12/3116, Jerry West to Polan County Airport with a term meaning 12/3117, George Shildt to the Polan County Airport Authority with a term meaning 12/3116. This was forwarded from January 27. It goes hand in hand with the first motion. Is there any other discussion on this? Okay. I think on number two and number three, I think I'm willing to, I would like to withdraw number two. I don't want to leave that out there simply because some of those folks, and they get phone calls and different things that really don't need to happen, so we don't need to leave it out there indefinitely. So I'm willing to withdraw number two. And number three, discuss action on the appointment of Navy Goodhead and Wayne Hewitt to the Polan County Industrial Building Authority with a term meaning 12/3115. This was forwarded from January 27. And I'm also willing to withdraw number three. Okay. Any other discussion? Let's go back to Mark. Annie, if you would come forward and give us an update, a lot of exciting things are happening in Polan County. It's just not by an airport. But Mark, if you don't mind, give us a little update about some of the things that are in the motion for Wellstar.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'm Mark Haney, President, Wellstar Polan Hospital. This past Monday, Wellstar, and at the same time, Emory University announced that we were entering into discussions of creating a joint company that all the healthcare assets of Emory and all the healthcare assets of Wellstar would be put together into one company. And a lot of what's driving this is the future of healthcare reimbursement as we move further into the Affordable Healthcare Act. Hospital systems like Wellstar may not be big enough to handle the cutbacks that we're going to be seeing in our federal funds through Medicare, Medicaid, and so forth. And so working together to creating a bigger system, a system that can withstand these budget cuts, a system that can grow as the future demands that we grow. When we look at our service area, we're going to see tremendous growth, and we need to be able to have the capital to meet that growth. And Polan County's had the opportunity this year really to experience that with the opening of the new hospital. And we don't want to create barriers in the future that can keep projects like that from happening. So we do see it as an advantageous direction for Wellstar to go, and actually, Emory sees it as an advantageous way for them to go, because right now, their healthcare assets are under Emory University. They will actually, Emory University would keep the university and the School of Medicine within the university, but it's their hospital access and their healthcare access, because they have several hospitals just like we do now. They have several retirement centers, senior living, nursing home type asset, and all of that would come into this new healthcare company. So we do see it as very advantageous. Currently, we're in a 45-day period in which each organization, because all this happened so far as the board directors have talked to each other and all of their senior leadership, and now it's time, the 45 days is going to be to start getting comments and feedback from our internal folks, doctors, staff, our other executives. I did not know until Monday morning at seven o'clock that this was happening. So the next 45 days is for each organization to be very public about what they're doing, looking at their internal staff and the communities they serve. And we had Rinald Jennings, our CEO, come to the regional board meeting where there's over 30 community citizens, leadership, leaders from Polan County that come together on a monthly basis. And Rinald came out and talked to that group about it. He also met with the hospital, although he did not. So we are soliciting input from the community also. But we do see this as very advantageous. It's going to be a very positive thing from a Polan County standpoint to be a part of a system that not only includes very well-respected healthcare facilities, but also the advantages of being a part of the research that is taking place at Emory and being able to win from that in our own community. So with that, I just, any questions?
Well, sitting in that meeting, Rinald Jennings did state that Wellstar was excellent at promoting their people and looking at that aspect of healthcare. And Emory was more into teaching and research. So the combination of those two entities looks like a great thing on the surface. And again, for full disclosure, they wanted to get it out in the open to both the authority and the regional board, and then also for the doctors. What they don't want to do is force this thing on anyone. What interests me was that Emory made the call to Wellstar and said, we'd like to open up some discussion. So I think Wellstar's been recognized as a great nonprofit hospital. A lot of people don't know that. Emory also has an advantage we don't have. They have the Woodruff Foundation, and there was a substantial amount of money recently granted out of that. Do I have the $200 million figure?
There's $200 million support from Woodruff Foundation on a project that Emory's doing right now that--
There's a patient title. So, you know, when you look at a hospital that's completely frozen today, it's built and an opportunity to build two more floors, that Coca-Cola money doesn't sound half bad. So I'm excited about this discussion time. And again, I think the thing that will make this happen and go together is when the doctors get together and they start chatting the one and other to make this happen. If a citizen wanted to make an inquiry or ask questions for that type of thing, is there somewhere we could place that on a webpage or something in that fashion if there's any discussion?
Let me, I know we've created a website that our employees can go to, our doctors can go to. Let me find out about communicating that on out to the community as a whole too. Right now, I don't know the specific answer to that.
Did y'all have any questions?
Mark, would there be the specialty units like the cancer unit at Emory, would that be a part of the package also emerging or, you know?
The cancer program is a part of it, and I mean, it's really all the healthcare assets. We're patient, if you go, if a citizen goes to an Emory facility for healthcare, those facilities will come under this new company, just like every one of them for Wellstar would. And the board directors is going to be appointed 50% by the University of Emory and 50% by Wellstar.
Well, keep us informed and let us know how the next 45 days go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. We go to new business. Item number one, discuss action to adopt resolution 15-05 of Polan County Board of Commissioners approving the Polan County Title VI Plan. Good morning.
Good morning.
Every three years, as a requirement for those folks, those agencies, counties that serve that receive funding from the 5311 source for public transportation have to submit a Title VI plan, which deals with discrimination towards the writers, race, creed, color, national origin, religious affiliation, even those with unlimited English proficiency. What's before you is that plan and how the folks that are involved in our transit system will handle such claims, how those claims are to be brought forward, and how they're to be resolved, as well as steps that we're going to take to make sure that our staffs are educated, that the opportunities are posted there to register complaints in our vehicles, in our buildings, et cetera. The resolution that you're asked to sign is in support of that plan. There was a good picture read over.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Number two, discuss action to adopt resolution 15-06, supplemental resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Polan County, Georgia, to approve bond resolution of Polan County Board Commissioners, supplemented authorizing the issuance of the Polan County Board Commissioners' refunding bond. Conservation Project Series 2015, the principal amount not to exceed $8,100,000. Ford House Government Complex Project Series 2015 is the principal amount not to exceed $20,500,000. And number three, to authorize the chairman and other officers and officials of the county to take such actions as were necessary to perform the issuance and delivery of a general obligation bond described herein. And number four, for other purposes. Cap.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to let, I'm going to ask Bonnie to go into a lot of those details. Basically, this is a supplemental resolution, which was a follow-up to the resolution that you issued at the last meeting, authorizing us to proceed in the sale of these bonds. We did that. The final savings came back to over $4.4 million. These bonds sold at a rate of 1.777 for the conservation property and 2.601 for the long-term government complex. So unless you have any other questions.
And this method's just in a slightly different way than y'all have been doing this. It's a two-step method. You do a first resolution, which authorizes us to go forward, and then this is a second resolution that contains the actual information from the sale that has the numbers in it and explains what the savings are. It's just a process that I prefer so that the first one says you can offer-- that I prefer, so that the first one says you authorize us to do the project, and the second one contains the information with the final last numbers. It's just a, it's a two-step method of doing it, rather than doing it all at the end. It's just something that I prefer to do that tells you that you're, A, doing the bonds, and then B, coming back at the end and letting you know what, what the bonds' final numbers were.
And what we're looking at there is just a few dollars shot out by the saving.
That's correct.
The schedule stays the same as far as payoff finishes in 2029?
2032.
2032?
Except for, this is the long-term four minutes from 2029 to 2032.
You'll be 39-years-old when you pay off?
That's right. That's exactly right.
Any other questions? Number three, discuss action to authorize the chairman to issue the letter endorsing supporting efforts in the city of Dallas for both sidewalk improvements on South Johnson Street and gateway sign improvements on Dallas Actway Highway, use of barrel transportation funds on property owned by Pauling County, and authorizing a ride of entry barrels. Is Kendall speaking? Kendall, will you come forward?
Kendall is the city manager of Dallas. This is what we have here today. You laid low on us, recommended. Good morning.
Good morning.
This project is, it's a third phase of our LCI project, street skate, beautification, and adding sidewalks. This will be in front of the heavy hands. It is adding sidewalk for the students of, well, for the citizens of Dallas and Pauling County, but also help for the students of George Highlands and Kennesaw State. You're out there now. You see students just walking down the road. So, this will add sidewalk to that area and put them on both sides of South Johnson, up to the West Memorial. And what we're asking is for the board to give the chairman the authority to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for right-of-entry onto the property owned by the county. It's just for us to add the sidewalks on the property.
Any other questions?
Yes.
So, it's just an endorsement by the Board of Commissioners?
Yes. It just gives us the authority to enter into y'all's property to construct the sidewalks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, discuss action to approve intergovernmental agreement between the counties of Pauling County and Scoot District, road improvements at North Pauling Campus for the purpose of reducing traffic congestion. In case y'all are wondering, Scott's trying to look more like our sheriff. He has new looks.
Actually, I did take the idea from him. I give him all the credit. Thank you. Most everyone is familiar with the traffic congestion of North Pauling Campus. This campus includes North Pauling High School, McClure Middle School, and Burnet Elementary. The entrance itself carries enough traffic to make it the 21st most-traveled road in the county. It's quite heavily traveled. Page two on the handout I've provided to you shows the growth curve we've seen since the year after, since the year after school began on campus. It's pretty dramatic. The top curve is the entrance road itself, and all the lower curves are showing are other roads and the vicinity of the campus feeding into it. Unfortunately, this trend is continuing, and as congested as it is now, it's hard to imagine what's going to happen in the future. Superintendent Cole and his staff have approached us for technical assistance in solving the issues out there. This is a different approach than in the past where school systems sort of said, "Fix the problem coming in," and we sort of pointed fingers at each other sometimes in the past. We've been coordinating very closely, really, the last six, eight years, in dealing with traffic issues in a cooperative and proactive way. This is the actual first agreement where we are coming to the table formally so that we can work, work across those boundaries in a seamless manner. And this agreement is doing just that. We have to have a partnership because the traffic doesn't stop at somebody's border. They can't just fix the problem inside the campus, and we can't just fix the problem on the county road system. So, I applaud and appreciate the efforts the school system to come to us and work with us. And they are bringing, what's most important in many cases, is the money. So, we're very pleased that they've stepped forward with some significant funding, and they've made this part of our last SPOLOSH program. They carved out some, some funding for transportation issues so that students and teachers and everybody that uses the campus can enter and exit safely to get the education they need. As you can see, the terms of agreement, the school system will provide up to $1 million for us to administer on a reimbursement basis. We'll bill them based on actual work performed without regard if it actually is on their property or on the entering road. Bob Rogan Road today serves only the schools out there, and therefore they are willing to spend the funds to improve that entrance road, even though it is our property. We would normally, in most situations, be the sole funding source. Our contribution is in kind services, such as technical, engineering effort, and administration effort. I don't have a price tag for that, but that will be the in-kind soft match. If, if we should enter into a situation where some of the projects will carry us beyond the million-dollar figure, as a, as sort of a guide, we're setting a limit of 30% additional funding that we would bring to the table with our SPOLOSH funds, and we could account for that easily in what will be done to Bob Rogan Road itself.
We've tried to sit down, Colette and I have on a monthly basis, occasionally have a council meeting, but we sit down and talk, and mostly it's traffic congestion problems when it comes to how the campus will interface with the V O E. But when we had a horrible ice storm, it let us know that there was no easy way in and out of North Pauling. So, it sort of brought us to a head and said, you know, it's time for us to work together and sit down and do something. So, you know, rather than having another situation where we're sort of trapped and hard to get out, we're trying to lean in that situation. Anything else you have, Mr. Scott?
There are projects with general descriptions listed in the agreement. We'll further refine that as we get into the engineering. But basically, Bob Rogan Road will be expanded to a four-lane road coming into the campus, and it will meet up with North Pauling Drive, which already is a four-lane inside campus. But because of traffic chasing its tail inside each school, neither road can function properly. So, our effort is to free up the issues that are causing the traffic, create more storage areas outside of the normal travel way so that we don't have a gridlock situation. Further in your handout, you can see some of the photos where we have a gridlock condition in the afternoon particularly. And we are already in motion on some of the improvements, and we would appreciate your approval of this so that we can implement some of this work even this summer and have some, some benefit to show by August when the next year starts.
I believe you have a guest here, Ken Ellsbury, Board of Education, as you can hear.
Hey, buddy. I think, yeah, Ken, Ken was very instrumental. He was our main contact with the staff, and he has been for several years, worked closely with us on the engineering matters. They've been a lot more receptive, I would say, than, than a decade ago in taking our suggestions. And I think regardless of, you know, turf issues or anything like that, I think nobody expected the traffic at this campus to reach what it did. So, I don't think it was really foreseeable. There are many benefits to having three schools in one location, particularly if you have children in two or more of those schools. I think that's a, that's a great thing, but it's not a great thing when it talks, when you talk about what it does to traffic. It generates its own congestion. So, there's no more questions. I appreciate your approval.
Scott, thanks for the other night. Scott went to the school board, presented this, and of course, they've already voted on it. And you did a great job there, and that went great. So, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd also say, since it was unanimous by the board, I think they know who they're dealing with, and Scott Green or our county DOT, and to select the county DOT overseers for... Just a couple of the clarifications. They're, they're putting up a million, and we're putting up 300,000?
Yeah, the agreement doesn't say how much we will put into it. They are offering the million. Presently, we, we think we can be under that, and so there may not be any need to actually tap our own funds, other than the resources we're doing, providing through internal engineering. Should that full amount be used, yes, we could tap into some SPOLOSH funds to finish out some of the improvements out there. And I just set a guideline, and I don't know that, we'll want it to be hard and fast at this time, but each contract we actually administer in the board will come back to you for approval. So, in the later phases, if we get to that point where we might overtop that million dollars and we start putting in our own funding, that will be brought before you. So, you'll, you'll know exactly where we're at on it and have approval.
Any other questions?
Great job, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Number five, discuss action to approve an agreement between Pauling County Board of Commissioners and Pauling County Economic Development Incorporated for the acceptance of a grant from the United States Economic Development Administration, an agreement for services related hereto, including the provision of matching funds for Pauling County Economic Development Incorporated for the project. The grant shall be used for a sanitary sewer service. Project could extend the existing 8-inch outfall sewer line to the Sunnyland Industrial Park. This guy Blake, who has worked on this pretty continuously, but Marquis asked you as the chairman of the economic development group to bring this forward.
Yeah, so I'll put the other hat on. Before I start, I do want to commend, y'all were talking about Scott. I just want to commend Scott Graham. I've worked on several projects for Wellstar over the years, and I've worked with many DOT folks, and I just want to commend Scott. He's been great to work with, and what he brings to the table has really helped us a lot. And I just want to take the opportunity to also commend what Scott's been doing.
I think we have an amazing staff within Pauling County, and we're very, very fortunate.
Yep. Okay, on this project, we were, Pauling County Economic Development was approached a lot, several months back, actually, by Dallas Millworth. Dallas Millworth was looking to do an expansion, and with, and currently, the industrial part that they're a part of, Sunnyland, is on septic tank. And basically, what they realized is that they could not expand where they were because of their limitations on septic. And so, they approached Pauling County Economic Development to see what we can do. Pauling County Economic Development and the city, I mean, and the county staff worked to identify a federal grant in which would provide the majority of the funds associated with extending the sewer line into Sunnyland Industrial Park, and then Pauling County Economic Development providing the balance of the funds associated with that project. And so, we have moved forward. We've got the grant application. We've, we've got to submit that, or sign the grant and get it in. And so, basically, we are asking for the county to agree to go with Pauling County Economic Development and, or support that with, because the county's actually the ones submitting the grant. And I would need Mike to tell me if I'm wrong when anything I say. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that Pauling County Economic Development is looking at that a lot of times we think about new companies coming to town and new jobs. But what we also got to realize is that we've got to keep the jobs we got. And this is an opportunity to keep the jobs we've got at that industrial park, because every one of those companies will have the same limitations as we move forward, and allow them to grow. And because the ability to grow each of those companies by getting rid of the septic fills and so forth and putting sewer in there is going to be tremendous. So, that was a very, it was a very interesting discussion at our board meeting when we decided to support this, because it was a existing company, and we, but that was the, it's growth of an existing company, but it's also keeping those jobs. So, it's offensive and defensive. And, but we see it as a great project. These are companies that have supported our economy for a long time, and it is an opportunity to use federal funding to make that happen.
Well, I think when we, when we look at this, this is a neighbor from Harrison County, and so they had the option of either trying to help them with sewer or moving this business closure to their home, which is in Harrells County. And by doing this, we can keep an existing business, and one that, actually, I think you were a part of, were in the Chamber of Commerce Award Small Business of the Year about a year or two ago?
Yes.
And so, somebody that makes that kind of impact on Pauling, and probably the work that y'all done and Blake's done to secure this grant. We have a mayor with us, Mayor Davy, anything you want to add for what's being said up here today?
I'm just glad that the grant is going to be able to go through.
Mr. Chairman, I also might add, I met with Dallas Millworth, and it's not just saving jobs, because it just goes that they are going to expand, correct?
Yes.
So, it's actually expansion of jobs. And also, hasn't another company already breathing out, hook up to the sewer?
There is another one out there that also said we do need that.
And I think it goes that they also can expand. I think Scott's moved to Washington, direct capacity to have some more. So, yes, that's a great deal.
Yes.
And Mark, do you have something about the economic development board of Pauling County of matching funds, have you? I think that's something that ought to be stated. Aren't y'all matching?
Yeah, we are providing the balance of that the federal funding, the grant that is provided for. The, we've been waiting, we're sort of, we've, we've got to get that, the grant application or whatever. And, and it's sort of interesting that our boards have, our board meets next week. So, what we need the Board of Commissioners to do is agree to sign the agreement for the grant, and then we will approve our final part of it next week. Because we, when we had our last meeting, we did not know what, how much the federal grant was going to provide for. So, we've got to approve those final funds. But we do, based on the budget that we have today, have the money to provide the balance of what this grant would be. I don't know exact numbers, Mike. Do you know?
The total project is $127,000, and it's a 50-50 max. So, the federal government provide just about, just under $64,000, and Economic Development has, has agreed to fund the other $64,000. So, our only business is to facilitate the grant, but the dollars will come from the federal government from Economic Development.
Any other question? Mark, thank you again for wearing a couple of, three or four different hats. That's the conclusion of our regular business session. There's no executive session. We're now to our public participation on non-agenda items. Governor Terry Tibbetts.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm Terry Tibbetts. I live at 270 Paris Road, which puts me in Earl Marmichael's post one. I came prepared today to, to give you a very different talk and supported the Pauling County Airport. And instead, I'd like to use my five minutes to respond to the comments that both Commissioner Paul Allen and Commissioner Colette have made today. We do disagree on some of the basic things, the direction the county's going in as far as whether or not to have a commercial airport in this county. But I believe that the comments that the two of you have made today represent a display of statesmanship, and I appreciate it. We do live in a land where we do have to abide by laws and contracts and covenants that not only we have signed, but our predecessors have signed. And the fact that you have recognized that and commented on it and expressed a willingness to, to work with that, I, while that, and I thank you.
Mr. Davy Cobb, Resolution 15-04.
I want to speak for you a moment about what I was hearing last meeting on Resolution 15-04. As I was sitting here last meeting, listening to the comments that both of you were making in regards to Resolution 15-04, I was a bit dismayed by some of your comments. The one that struck me the most were the comments you made about the so-called... The one that struck me the most were the comments you made about the so-called gentleman's agreement that had been abided by for many years and of course, both of you voiced your opinion against the proposed resolution and in fact, voted against the resolution. It seems that both of you have forgotten what occurred about a year ago in a meeting held by the IBA, the Airport Authority, and both commission meetings in February of 2014. As it relates to the secret, covert and secret matter and with the constitutional amendment that created the Industrial Building Authority, what discussed and proposed resolutions were passed. The records of the events and everyone ever got a copy of, except the new commissioners, everyone ever got a copy of this in a February meeting last year, reflect that an attempt to change the constitutional amendment that created the Industrial Building Authority was first covertly initiated on or about February the 3rd of 2014 through a proposed ad in the Dallas New Era. The record further reflects that discussion was held between Howard Mackel and Tom of the law firm that represents the county and the IBA on or prior to February the 6th, 2014. And as a result of those conversations, a draft was composed and a bill to be entitled and act was forwarded to Howard Mackel on that date with the following quotations, and I quote, "A tax please find the draft local legislation for your review that you discussed with Tom." Talking about a haphazard timetable coming from the firm's representative of the county. This issue was first discussed at a commissioners' meeting eight days after that and both of you claimed that you knew nothing about the intent of the ad nor were you aware that a proposed draft had been already sent to Howard Mackel, complete and ready to be introduced as legislation. A few days later, the IBA and the Airport Authority passed a resolution relating to this matter, but failed to include any mention of these resolutions on the agenda for that meeting, which prevented any citizen the opportunity to sign up and speak for or against any proposed changes. Mr. Chairman, your brother, Borkin Austin, chaired the IBA meeting. In fact, I believe that the record will reflect that he is in fact, the chairman of the Industrial Building Authority. On February the 25th, during the work session held here, you proposed a resolution to the Board of Commissioners, a drastic change to the IBA constitutional amendment and for the first time, you afforded the commissioners the opportunity to see and openly discuss the pros and cons of a proposed resolution to change the Industrial Building Authority amendment. Mr. Chairman, this was 19 days after the draft that was sent to Representative Howard Mackel on your behalf and was ready to put in the hopper the following morning after the evening vote on February the 25th. In fact, the record clearly implies that you were aware of the proposed legislation change on or before February the 3rd of 2014 and that you secretly were a party to the proposed changes in the language to the Industrial Building Authority. And then a...
Mr. Coggins, your time's up.
Thank you. Can I make a motion to suspend the rules and allow Mr. Coggins three more minutes, two more minutes? Let's go with two more minutes to finish up. I can just pay the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll move the aye. Aye. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
And in a covert secret manner, kept this secret from at least some of the commissioners, if not all of them, for the next 19 days. And only through divine intervention did they become aware of the entire intent of the proposed changes to the IBA or the evening on the evening of February the 25th. A few moments ago, you were talking about covenants and contracts. Commission, there are six citizens who have not had the opportunity to have their day in Superior Court of Pauline County for over a year now. I urge you to bring your resolution before this commission to hear this case as soon as possible. Sentionship in any form is unacceptable. It is past time to do the people a business in an open, honest, and transparent manner. Thank you very much.
Management of County Products.
Ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, my name is John Dean. I live at 1903 Paul Harris Road in Dallas, Georgia. As soon as we finished our Waffle House in New York is where I actually live, we're going to probably succeed from Dallas. With that, first of all, I'd like to give my gratitude towards our planning group here in Pauline County. They're doing an absolutely marvelous job with tools they have. When you look at throwing a reservoir project across the wall for them to plan and the airport across the wall for them to plan, that's got to be, I wouldn't have a job. And my proposals today is better management tools for these gentlemen in front of us to make better management decisions and we can control our costs better. What got me into this was, oh, 2013, somewhere in that light apartment, I kept seeing data from the new airport. It was 2,000 jobs this month and then next month we're going to have 3,000. So I had personal meetings, I had Colonel Carmichael come out to the house, I met with Blake Swafford, Todd Farmell, Mr. Austin, and I, nowhere could I find a regimented, documented business plan for the airport. The numbers kept varying and I kept trying to find out where the numbers kept coming. It's not where the river ran or what facts did you base them on. With that, I found over time that a lot of the data that I was seeing was conceptual data, not based in plan on real facts, hard facts, research facts. With that, I came up and I presented, Mr. Austin, and I thank you for the two hours of time you spent in your office, a plan of where we, where we sit down and look at the needs and requirements for Pauline County. Mr. Austin also mentioned today we need, we've got an airport, we need to make the best of the airport that we have, need to take the opportunities of it. But we need to understand the needs of our community. And I believe our economic development guys really kind of set me up this morning with the needs of the sewer works and that relates back into another story that I have. Tip-top poultry has been, people have said that tip-top poultry had come here because of our commissioners. Well, I happen to be personally friends with Walker family and Mr. Walker, I talked to him this weekend, Chad, and it's just not that way. Tip-top didn't come here and never happened to come here. They were going to expand here, but they didn't have sewer or did they have water? So we're actually on the right track, I think, with the sewers and stuff, especially in Pauline County. And I had this all written out in the side of the last meeting to leave it to the car and on the back I've got shower curtain advertisements here, so I'm going to take care of it. Just bear with me, please. When we get developed our needs and requirements, they need to be realistic, are perceived. Need to make a difference between what they are. We need to develop a requirement document. These requirements need to take the needs of the county and the people of the county and translate it into requirements, hardcore requirements that are based on facts. These facts need to be realistic, they need to be relevant to the project and they need to be measurable. And if I have time, I'll explain why they're really, why they need to be measurable. I was on the airport steering committee. A lot of the data that we saw on the steering committee dealt with RPMs. Well, RPMs is a factor that airlines generate their revenue from and how they develop their cost. When you're looking at an airport, it's not relevant to how you're doing it. It's how much money Delta or whoever's at the airport is going to make. Airlines base their money off of, obviously, profit from it, whereas the airports make their money off landing fees, rental fees from terminals, et cetera. So make sure that you got relevant data. Don't jump and use RPMs, for example, to justify the airport. I did see a, an email come out, it looked like the deceased voters in the last Alabama governor's election that voted. It was so long, it was actually longer than the comments were, but it says, did the math? $43,000, 52 weeks, five days a week, two flights a day. That's real good, but the only thing that's quantitative in that presentation is 52 wins every year, five days a week, and two flights a day. The economic impact is an opening number. It's like having, we're going to have a nice state. It needs to be quantified. And there again, if you back into that number, it's probably using ticket sales, which is not, it's not why Air Force bases profits off of. If you look at how, for example, Hartsfield bases their profits, they use in plane, embarked passenger fees. They figure out what they're costing.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules and give them two more minutes like Mr. Coggins, please? Are your motions are safe?
Safe.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before that was the first time, Mr. Austin, but with that said, when you actually get away from the RPMs and the ticket sales and get into the, to what the airports make their money off of and how they make their profit, we're only going to make roughly quarter of a million dollars a year off the same facts where you're using a 50-seat airplane because Hartsfield on total revenue is only $10 a passenger, but they make them revenue. That's not counting the cost. But anyway, we need to make sure that our data that we're setting up for our requirements are based on real facts. When we develop our requirements, we need to go in and develop an integrated master plan where we have all these sub projects integrated into one plan. I remember Lockheed, we would break them out into separate areas where you couldn't see the whole program. That's not the way you did business realistically. You should put the whole project, the water project, and integrate it. One thing that concerned me was in Mr. Austin's meeting, he said that we didn't have the funds to, he wanted to do this, add the extra planning stuff, but he didn't see that we had the funds. We ran a two BM dollar aerospace company off Microsoft project for planning. That can't be that hard to even, we had to have two people. With the amount of money that we're spending, we should be able to afford support to have detailed plans for that. Now, with that said, when you get through, you need to execute your plan and you need to validate your plans. Take your requirements where I said they were measurable and track how you perform to that plan. Come back and say, did I create seven buildings? Did I do whatever? Follow your plans. And with that said, I would take a real quick minute. A couple of weeks ago, after the meeting, I was very disrespectful to the, one of our commissioners, Dave Carmichael, and the commissioners in general with something I said and the officers. And I would like to personally apologize for that. I'm big enough to open my mouth and probably I should be able to apologize too. But anyway, it appears that our county is finally starting to work together, even though we disagree on a lot of issues. Chairman's going to bring up a fact today, I think, that I wish you to...
I'm sorry.
I want your motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, say aye.